Thank you. Moving to ordinance 1352, amending Chapter 52 of the Municipal Code of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, offenses against public peace, safety, and morals by adding Section 52.92, truancy. We have a number of people that wish to speak to this issue. I'd like to initially call on Attorney Dean Frieders to clarify the ordinance in front of us, providing some background.
Sure. The city, and the contact was initially reached with the police department. The school district contacted us and said that from time to time they have a concern with students that are either truant or that accrue excessive absences, and they asked for our assistance in combating that issue. We looked at model ordinances from across the state, what had been successful and had not been successful in other districts, and we worked on putting together an ordinance that would allow the city to collaborate with the school district, which is predominantly what this is oriented towards. The ordinance contemplates that essentially if a police officer sees someone who they believe should be in school, but they have the ability to make contact with that person, they would contact the school district and see if it was a student that was enrolled at the school district. If it is a student that is enrolled and is subject to compulsory attendance and should be in school, then the police officer could take further steps. Or if it is a, if the school district advises one of our school resource officers that they have a student that is truant from school or has excessive absences, there'd be the potential to look for that student. I understand that there have been some concerns that have arisen from people who either have their children go to private schools or home schools. The ordinance was crafted with those individuals in mind as well. The procedure contemplated in here is exactly what I described to the council, that the police officers would contact the school district and the school district would advise if a student was enrolled or not. So if there's a student who's not enrolled in the public school system, if they're either a private school student or a homeschooled student, they would not be subject to sanctions under this. The school district would advise, "We don't have a student that's enrolled here under that name," and there wouldn't be a reason to proceed under the ordinance. We did recognize, however, that there may be times when a private school or a homeschool parent may have problems theoretically with a student participating in their alternative education program. And so we built into the ordinance the ability for the police chief to enter into voluntary agreements with private schools or homeschool parents that would allow them to use these same procedures. Again, there's nothing in the ordinance that makes those mandatory, they're purely voluntary, and they would be designed to allow a private school or a homeschooling parent to take advantage of these same procedures. I understand there's also been some questions about the definitions used in the ordinance. We did craft them to the greatest extent possible to be consistent with state law. For example, the definition of absence or excused absence in the ordinance is as defined by the school district from time to time with certain minimum standards, and that's consistent with the school code, which requires the local school board to define what constitutes valid cause for an absence. In the absence of this ordinance, it would theoretically be possible for the police department to pursue and charge an individual for a violation of the state statute that could be prosecuted as a criminal offense, and we were seeking a less obtrusive city ordinance violation tool to use to help the school district with interventions where necessary. Any action that would be taken pursuant to this would be taken in front of a judge. So there, if there was a charge arising out of the ordinance, it'd be a charge that would go before a judge, and a judge would review the charges and then ensure the evidence and make a determination of liability. So to the extent that there are concerns that the city may undertake some efforts that would be heavy-handed in some fashion, I can't envision any circumstance where the city would charge an individual with a violation of the ordinance if they were a homeschooled student and their parent advised that they're a homeschooled student, and even if the city did undertake such a measure, I can't imagine any circumstance where a judge would find someone guilty of a violation. So it has been designed to give flexibility so we can work with those parents or those private schools if they wish, but so that we're not intruding on their private educational process if they don't wish to participate, and so that we can work very closely with the school district. School district has asked that we consider this ordinance expeditiously. It came up very shortly before the start of school, and we developed the ordinance and met with the school district on a pretty intensive timeline to get this in front of you and give you an opportunity to consider it.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. John Salavesh, please come forward, state your name and address, address the council.
My name is John Salavesh. I live at 1401 North First Street in DeKalb, Illinois. I'd like to thank the mayor and esteemed council for allowing me to address this item. I'm here to state my objections to the content, the wording in amendment as proposed, in particular the inclusion of homeschooling, even with the elaboration by Dean Frieders. Not to read the whole ordinance, but I will get right to the meat of some of my objections under 5292A1 in the definitions of truant or truancy. As a homeschool parent, my child is not required to attend, so there are no compulsory school attendance laws that apply to my child. 5292B, fines, fines are already covered in state law under 105 ILC S5261112, and that's under Chapter 122. Under D, burden of proof, it finishes, "Such evidence may be rebutted only with written documentation that violations of this ordinance were excused absences." Homeschools are exempt from taking attendance or keeping records of attendance, so it's really irrelevant to have it in the amendment. And then this part, I have to read the whole bit. The procedure, under procedure, I feel that detaining a child by a member of the police who will effectively become truancy officers, if this passes, every officer will become a truancy officer, will be traumatic for a child under any circumstance, and this gives them the right to temporarily detain any person reasonably suspected to be subject to the provisions of this ordinance for purposes of verifying enrollment in school or coverage under this ordinance. Who is to decide what reasonable suspicions are and what are the standards? They're not stated in the ordinance. Leaves it kind of open-ended. Under 5292F, private schools and home schools, the chief of police of the City of DeKalb is and here and shall hereby be authorized to enter into one or more enforcement agreements with private schools and/or persons engaged in homeschooling, providing for the enforcement of this ordinance on the terms and conditions outlined above, with such private school or homeschool supplanting the school district. In the absence of such an agreement, the city may enforce this ordinance based on the, upon the results of any investigation the city may conduct. What exactly is the enforcement agreement? Are there drafts been made up and are they available? It seems like we're trying to put the cart before the horse. And additionally, in the absence of such an agreement, the full weight of the ordinance still applies. It's a little confusing. Section 2 goes on, another open-ended part of the ordinance. Section 2 finishes with, "The mayor shall be authorized to approve minor amendments to this ordinance within 30 days of the passage hereof to accommodate reasonable requests of the school district." I feel that that effectively is circumventing the legislative process, limiting public input, sidestepping the democratic process that makes America what it is. It's signing an open-ended law, basically. I feel that the whole amendment needs to be reworked and that the homeschooling provision needs to be taken out. I also feel that the actions of the city council are perhaps overstepping the boundaries, literally, of its powers, in that District 428 has schools not only in DeKalb but Cortland and Malta as well. A 1950 Illinois Supreme Court ruling, People versus Levison, sets the basics for private and homeschooling of school-aged children. The decision, as interpreted by the Illinois State Board of Education, in effect gives the parents of homeschooled children a very wide range of latitude, freeing the parents to decide when, where, how, and what to teach their children. There are only two basic provisions in the requirement of that decision, that the branches of education or subjects taught in a private or home school be equivalent to those being taught in the public schools, and that the daily instruction of a child in a private or home school be in the English language. That's it. There's no hours, set hours, that you are required to teach your child every day. There's no days of attendance required. There's no minimum hours in the day, number of days of instruction per year for students in private or home schools. This exempts homeschooled children from compulsory attendance requirements. I ask you, how can a homeschooled child be considered truant if there are no requirements for attendance? Also included in 105 ILC 5, the school code, are articles stating that it's the responsibility of the regional superintendent of schools for the students county of, pardon me, for the students county of residents for investigating reports of noncompliance with the compulsory attendance laws therein. The DeKalb County Regional Office of Education, number 16, which includes our district, 428, already employs two truancy officers and four outreach officers. I believe that this amendment, as worded and proposed, is redundant in that it gives city powers and remedies that are already in place in one form or another, be it state statute, the school court, or under the responsibilities of the regional office of education. I also believe that it would be difficult, if this passes, for the police, who effectively become truancy officers, to differentiate between children who are not required to be in school and children who are supposed to be in school just at a glance or an interaction with them on the street. This opens the doors to many possible scenarios. Let's say I send my child, who is homeschooled, during school hours to the park, the store, and my child gets picked up for alleged truancy, simply for the fact that my child is out and about during normal school hours. Then the officer has to contact dispatch, who has to contact the school district or has to contact us, the parents. Imagine getting a call from the officer, "Hello, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, this is Officer so-and-so, DeKalb Police Department." As a parent, I know my heart would jump right out of my throat and I would go directly into panic mode. As for detaining a child, I feel that this opens the city, the police department, up to certain legal liabilities, perhaps lawsuits, injuries, psychological trauma for both parents and/or children. The associated memo dated August 21st, 2013, from Rudius Pirtu, Chief Lowry, and Dean Frieders to the mayor and city council, states that additional operational details will be worked out between the school district and the city administration. To me, again, this is akin to signing a blank legislative check. If you pass this ordinance, you're enabling yet unseen changes to be made, putting the cart before the horse, has not served this community well in the past, and I don't feel it will be effective this time either. I beseech you, as the council and mayor, as representatives of the citizens and children of DeKalb, please do not pass this amendment as proposed this evening. I would also ask that you do not waive the second reading, if it gets to that point. The Illinois State Board of Education governs the area of truancy, not the City of DeKalb, not the city council, not the mayor, not the city attorney, nor the chief of police. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate the time to speak to you. I hope you do the right thing by voting this down.
Thank you, John. The next registered speaker is Greg Akers.
If you could state your address for the record, please. Greg Akers, 309 South 11th Street, DeKalb. My wife and I have homeschooled in DeKalb for the past 15 years. To date, we've graduated three of our seven children. Our oldest daughter is a very busy mother of four in Aurora. Our son just completed his bachelor's work in accounting at NIU this summer, and this last week began his work as a graduate assistant while he works on his master's degree. Our second oldest daughter is a 19-year-old junior in the School of Education at NIU, and we're very proud of our children's academic achievements, and we look forward to much the same for our youngest four. Now, these accomplishments are due in no small part to the freedom afforded to homeschoolers by the state of Illinois and the City of DeKalb, and it's this freedom which I fear can be impeded that has brought me to speak to you tonight. It's my understanding that this ordinance that we're talking about, 1532.92, gives public schools unlimited power to define what an excused absence is for everyone. Unfortunately, this is an invitation to an abuse of power. Within the same section, there's a requirement for parents to give advance notice of a child's absence. Now, I don't think it's possible for me to notify my employer that I will be sick on a certain day next week, and I don't believe it's possible for parents to provide this information to the school district in advance of their children being ill. The ordinance gives the police power to arrest or detain any homeschooled child they believe to be truant, and allows that police officer to drop the homeschooled child off at a public school. Now, I realize there is the opportunity for families to enter into an agreement with the chief of police about the enforcement of this ordinance, but I believe I speak for most homeschoolers when I say our entering into agreements or registering is unreasonable and unnecessary. In summary, I understand the spirit of the ordinance is to help and not to hurt. However, the way it is currently worded may cause unwanted collateral consequences. I urge you to vote this ordinance down, or at the very least postpone action until it can be studied further and perhaps rewritten.
Okay. Thank you, John. Next registered speaker is Jeffrey Lewis. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mayor Ray, and thank you to the council for giving me a few minutes. I usually appear on you, in front of you on behalf of various business clients. Tonight, I was asked to come and speak to you on behalf of several private school and homeschool families. I reside, my office as an attorney is at 2045 Aberdeen Court in Sycamore, and although I'm not a DeKalb citizen, our children love to spend a lot of time in DeKalb at the library. They like to tell us how much better it is and will be as compared to where we're living now. But anyway, I want to make sure that the council understands that there are a number of problems with this ordinance. I spoke to Attorney Frieders on Friday when I learned that the ordinance was on the agenda, and he gave me much the same information that he presented tonight. Being an attorney, I have to admit that we don't always see eye to eye, and this may be one instance where he and I aren't going to necessarily agree on all of the information that's being presented. For one thing, I believe that this ordinance, as it's drafted, exceeds the city's authority. I don't believe the city has the authority to enter into this type of ordinance for a variety of reasons. The Illinois Municipal League has said that truancy ordinances such as this should only be entered into when they are the subject of a written intergovernmental agreement between a school district and a municipal body. I don't believe there is an agreement that covers this ordinance. Having said that, I would also, I know you've got some other homeschool families that want to speak. I would like to point out a couple of things that families may want to know about from the perspective of private school students. I suspect that if given time, you would get some more interaction with those parents, but because this item came up on such short notice, most of them don't even know it's here. It would be very simple for me to give you an example like this. If I had a child in the middle school in DeKalb and I decided that I wanted to transfer her to St. Mary's in midstream, that could be accomplished by simply having my child start attending St. Mary's. It may take a while for the DeKalb school to realize that she's been transferred, and if the day after she starts at St. Mary's, she walks to the library to drop off some school books, she could be arrested for truancy. And when the officer contacts the DeKalb school, they would say, "Yes, she's on our rolls, she should be in our schools." They don't know yet that she's been transferred. According to your ordinance, if she does not have a written excused absence from the DeKalb school system, she will be fined as a truant student, and I, as her parent, could also be fined. The ordinance says the only defense available to her is proof of a written excused absence from the school. I'm bothered by an ordinance that limits our ability to defend when we have legitimate excuses. The Illinois School Code provides exemptions such as religious services, death in the family, emergency illnesses. Those are not included in your ordinance, and they need to be, at the very least. I would point out, ladies and gentlemen, that the school district does have the ability to enforce its truancy laws if it wants to avail itself of the Illinois laws that are on the books already. Truancy officers are provided, there is a procedure in the school code for notifying families when their students are truant, to give parents first the opportunity to intervene, and then when those parents don't intervene, there is an opportunity for law enforcement to intervene. And it happens under the Juvenile Court Act, which is the way that children are supposed to be treated in our judicial system, not in an ordinance violation where they can be found guilty without the opportunity to defend themselves appropriately. I would also point out that the school code allows for the parents of those children to be found guilty of misdemeanor crimes. So adding this to the City of DeKalb ordinances really does nothing to the school's ability to enforce the school attendance laws, except that it provides the entire DeKalb police force as truant officers, which really wasn't what was intended by the state legislature when it set forth the enforcement provisions in the school code. I would ask the city to pass on the opportunity to expand the enforcement of the school code and simply vote down the ordinance. At the very least, I think that your citizens need the opportunity to know what's being voted upon and provide some additional interaction rather than voting on it immediately tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Next speaker this evening, Ron Flex. Ron?
My name is Ron Flex, 6728 Minnigan Road in Waterman, Illinois. And as Jeff stated, I am also not a resident of DeKalb, but we do spend a lot of time here. We spend time at the library, we spend time at the parks, we spend a lot of money here besides buying groceries and other types of necessities. But that's not the reason for coming before you. I want to thank you first for the opportunity to speak. A lot of the issues have been covered ahead of time, but let me go over a few of them that maybe I can emphasize here. As I was looking through the third whereas in the agreement, it talked about an urgent public need. And from what I understand, that urgent public need sort of sidesteps some of the time and that would require to actually assess this and really study it carefully. So it sounds like you can actually go ahead and do it now versus waiting a little bit. And it seems like waiting, as you heard Jeff say, many people don't know about this, they're not even here. Why is it so urgent? There already is a law that says, you know, a state law, that says that. Jeff covered that already. So there is really no urgency here that should circumvent the normal process in the time I noticed in Section A, it was mentioned that any person under the age of 18 years. And so my question was, why 18 years? I mean, there's already a state law saying 17 years. I graduated when I was 17. I mean, do we really want people who are already out of school, you know? Why choose 17 when 18 is already there as a state recommendation? I'd also like to concur with some of the previous speakers who had mentioned the fact of detaining students, you know, just based upon the fact that my kids might be at the library doing something, my wife may be dropping them off, and they're going around the corner, and someone can just stop and say, "Hey, where are you? Why are you here?" And the officer has the right to detain them and take them away. I didn't hear anybody mention this, but how is anyone going to find out, you know, from each school, whether you're a private school or homeschool? That seems like a lot of burden on the city. I mean, you've already got enough, you know, people and enough budget and, you know, that's taxed already. Why do you want to make it more difficult for the people? Because that's going to take more resources in order to try to define all that stuff and take care of it. So there's quite a few things, but I'll let a few of the other people, you know, get a chance to speak here. I just would urge that the council would vote to defeat this ordinance, or if not defeat it, as you've heard from several people before, to at least give more time to have it studied for people to give more feedback. And the homeschooling references are really the key, but it's not just homeschooling, it's just the rights for all the kids that I was concerned about, to give them all the parents and the people more time to make the right decision. So I'd ask you guys to consider that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ron. Lauren Harrison?
Hello, fellow DeKalb residents, council members, and Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to see you this evening. My name is Lauren Harrison. I live at 324 North Second Street in DeKalb. My family has lived in DeKalb since 2000. We chose this town to live in to buy our first house, and we have loved being here. Tonight, when we opened our meeting, we began with a pledge of allegiance, and some of the words that we said at that time claimed and promised liberty and justice for all. I'm concerned about the proposed truancy ordinance because I believe it impinges upon the liberty and the justice for DeKalb citizens. The proposed ordinance that we're discussing this evening gives public schools in DeKalb authority to determine attendance matters for private school students. It's not appropriate to take private school students and put them under the jurisdiction of the public schools. Illinois law requires that young people need to be educated beginning at their seventh birthday, continuing until their 17th birthdays. This ordinance says that if a student is not in school the day after his 17th birthday, he is now considered to be truant. For clarification, Illinois law says that a student needs to be educated from his seventh birthday till his 17th birthday in the same, in the branches of education that the public schools offer, in the languages of either English or American Sign Language. That is Illinois state law. It doesn't seem appropriate when a child or a young adult has completed all of the educational requirements that the law requires of him, to then require him to be in school beyond that through a local ordinance when the state law says something different. Another concern is that this ordinance uses the term homeschool. Under Illinois state law, there are no separate educational entities called home schools. Under Illinois state law, all home schools are private schools, and any ordinance that DeKalb issues or adopts, passes, that addresses different categories of schools should not introduce false categories that are not included under our law. I question the wisdom of creating a legal subcategory where one does not exist. 15 years ago, my family chose DeKalb to be our home. We've been privately educating our children here. My oldest has just graduated, she's a National Merit Scholar, she's done very well. I have additional children. I now have five more children in my home who are in school. Three of them are in public schools, two of them are in private schools. I care about whether or not the schools in this town are good. I care passionately about them. But I am also concerned because of the dynamic that I have seen in DeKalb between the public school system and the private school students and families. In Sycamore, if a privately schooled student wishes to take part in after-school activities or extracurricular activities, or transfer into the school partway, for example, through high school, that student is welcomed and is brought on board, the school is willing to work with the family to tailor the program as needed for that family and for that student. DeKalb public schools have earned a reputation for being hostile to private school students. If a private school student, a homeschooled student, wishes to transfer into DeKalb High School, they are routinely told that they are going to have to start as a freshman, even if they're coming in as a junior. I've told my family that if something were to happen and our privately schooled students needed to be put into public school, they should, our family should probably move to Sycamore because of the dynamic here with DeKalb schools. And I like DeKalb, I love living here, I don't want to move. But I think it's important for us to consider what the dynamic in the community is so that when other families that want to come live here ask, "How are the schools? How are the laws? How is it for our family if we want to, what's it likely to be for our family if we come and live in your town?" I want to be able to tell friends who come here, and I've had several friends move to this area, I want to be able to tell them, "Come live in DeKalb, it's great here. Not only are the schools great if you want to use them, but if you are privately schooling, if you're homeschooling, there's a great support system here for you." I don't want to have to tell my friends, there are other people that ask me, "You know, I like DeKalb, but you might be better off living in a different town." Please vote this ordinance down. It's not as thought out as well as it should be. It oversteps the bounds of what is appropriate legally, and we've already got good laws on the books. It doesn't make sense to try to monkey with it and break some- it and break something that is already in place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there a discussion among council members?
It seems like we're getting caught off guard here. My first question, and I forgot to ask it of Attorney Frieders, maybe someone in the audience, Jeff Lewis, maybe you know. Did the actual school board vet this publicly? Have you all had a chance to speak before the school board? So this is kind, this could be considered an end run by the administrators at 428? Yeah, I'm going to push it back. I think all your concerns sound like they belong at the school board level rather than our level.
Dean, can you answer that?
Yes. This has not been reviewed by the school board, it was reviewed by the district's administration, the superintendent, and the administration at the various schools. I think there is, I think it may be of interest to the council to have someone from the district come and talk about this ordinance. I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding of the ordinance from some of the comments that have been received tonight. As I indicated at the outset, the ordinance itself, the very first section of it indicates that it only applies to students who are subject to compulsory school attendance laws, which, as some of the speakers correctly identified, if you're a private school or a homeschool student, you're not subject to compulsory attendance laws, and therefore you can't be found in violation of this ordinance. There's no circumstance where you can be truant if you're not subject to compulsory attendance. And the idea that this gives the school, some authority, the school district some authority to define things differently or take powers away from homeschool students simply isn't the case. Again, the ordinance starts out at the outset saying that it only applies to students who are subject to compulsory attendance laws. The school does have in place an intergovernmental agreement with the school district pertaining to information sharing and resource sharing that satisfies our obligations to do so with regard to any legal concerns. And again, the concept that the school district has the ability to define what constitutes an absence. If you look at the school code, the school code defines valid causes and absence as something, situations beyond the control of the student as determined by the Board of Education in each district. So we drafted that to be consistent with Illinois law. And again, in that same area of the school code, chapter 26, that's the chapter that says that you're not subject to compulsory attendance if you're attending a private or parochial school, or if you're unable to attend school, for example. So many of the concerns, I think, are based on just a fundamental misreading of the ordinance. Some of the speakers were correct that there are state statutes in place with respect to truancy. The school district indicated that their desire, after seeing successful models in other communities, was to have a lower intensity means of pursuing that, that they did not want to see parents or students prosecuted for misdemeanors, or see students subjected to participation in the juvenile delinquency program based on truancy if there was a lower intensity mechanism for trying to get them to comply. And obviously, that process does remain, and is something that the school district could avail themselves of. And similarly, as it stands now with compulsory attendance laws, if the police department thought it necessary to enforce compulsory attendance laws as they're drafted, they could detain an individual on the street and conduct an investigation if they have a reasonable suspicion that there's a violation of the state statute. So we're not trying to introduce any new draconian measures here. We are trying to introduce a very limited measure to help the school district with their unique situation. The enforcement of this would obviously only be within the corporate limits of the city. We're not seeking to enforce this outside the city, nor does the ordinance contemplate that. The provisions relating to homeschooling, again, were intended to offer this as a tool for either private or homeschool students if the parents or if the administrators of a private school sought to do that. So essentially, that would be the response to each of the concerns that have been raised. The model that we're using here is based on ordinances that have been tried and utilized successfully across the state. But it sounds like there are some concerns, and I think the district would be happy to, I can't speak for them, I suspect they'd be happy to have someone come out and address some of these concerns.
Well, my concern, you've hit the nail on the head, is what kind of lag time, when Attorney Lewis created a possible scenario, what kind of lag times would the school district possibly have between when a student transferred to another system of education? My only knowledge of homeschooling, not in Illinois, would be from my cousins in Iowa, they've been very successful, all their kids have done very well. But I can remember many, many discussions of the school districts trying to figure out a way to get their state sharing for education, and it seems to me that the system might be set up to lag pretty far if, in that scenario. But I definitely would like to hear from the school district, I'd like the parents here to have an opportunity to contact the school board either directly. Do we know if there's a school board meeting between now and our next meeting? We don't know. And I'm not going to vote yes until Attorney Lewis is satisfied as to his questions and concerns.
In response to that specific question, again, the second that a student transfers out of a public school, regardless of whether there's a lag in records, the second you're attending a private school, you're no longer subject to the compulsory attendance laws. So even if the city did theoretically charge someone, which I think is unlikely given the police force that we have, but even if they did, that person would be able to come in and into court and show the judge, I'm not subject to this ordinance, I'm not a compulsory school attendance student, this ordinance has no applicability to me at all. But I think we certainly can have someone from the district come back and address some of these concerns as well.
Alderman Lowery.
As I was reading through the backup, one of the things that I highlight in the circle that this is a last resort for the school district, and the fact that it has come before us, and I'm not sure what's happening with the school district or what they have, what's, I don't know what's going on with them, but I do, as a parent in this community, I've had 10 children to go through the school district, and I can remember when one of my child, I will put them on the bus to go to school, and then I'll get a call saying, your child is not in school, and I say, why not? He was there, oh, he was there first, second, and third hour, and then he decides to leave. So then I had to literally go up to the school, and I had to walk him to his classes. And not one time, when him skipping classes or missing school, have I ever had a truant officer call me, notify me, send me a letter or anything. So for me, the school district is not doing its job. And now to want to make an ordinance and to find parents, I would like them to do their job first before I can even consider even voting on anything like this.
At what point can we hear from Attorney Lewis, since I mentioned him and we only heard from her staff and my comments?
Alderman Baker, at this point, I prefer to entertain discussion among council. Further clarification can be referred between Attorney Frieders and parents or attorney opinions. So at this point, I'd like to entertain further council discussion.
Dean, I appreciate your concern about, once they get to court, they'll be able to clear it, but I think several parents raised the issue of their child being detained, and even that being maybe not a good experience for them, and I think that's where a lot of their concerns are. I certainly understand that, you know, when they get to court, but let's just say, like my children went to St. Mary's. And so let's say that it was religious holiday and they weren't in school, so one of the officers stopped them. I mean, it's the same situation there, that that could be a traumatic experience for a student, just that initial contact. I mean, are the officers going to ask, are you a homeschool, are you at St. Mary's? And is that going to be enough of an answer?
I think presumably they would, and as the ordinance indicates, they could check with the school district and see if a student is enrolled or not.
Right, but there, but see, right there, though, now you've already detained them while the officer makes that contact. I mean, I think it's something that if, I see that as an issue, I guess, is my point. And again, with Monica Larry's comments, you know, are we really trying to do the school district's job for them here instead of letting them do theirs first?
Let me ask at this point, what, Alderman Snow, you have a comment?
Well, I think there are some real issues raised tonight and legitimate issues. I think some of it is misunderstanding, but also I think we can clarify the language of some of this. And I also have some kind of issues with students that are subject to the local school district. Like even the fines, I think these are minimum fines, not maximum fines, and somebody could be fined thousands of dollars. And I realize, you know, you want to put a club to the parents to make sure their parents, their students attend, but I think, you know, this could potentially run into thousands of dollars of fines for a family that can't even afford that. So I think when you get fines that are above $100, you know, and they're $500 or $1,000 per student and per parent, that that's excessive regardless of the reason, and if there's other ways to maybe encourage enforcement. So I do have some issues that I think need to be worked out. Certainly, I would not pass this on a second reading, and I think there needs to be some language changes even for the first reading.
Alderman Baker?
I'm sorry, but I want a second chance of clarification. Our city attorney made comment as to the content of Attorney Lewis's comments, and he stood like up near the podium like he wanted a chance to answer that. And by you not allowing him to speak, you're forcing me to contact him directly and then relay that information individually to all the council members, including yourself, when it could be clarified here in just a moment. We regularly, in the past, all the time I've been on the council, if we have a question or clarification that we need from an audience member that is just addressed, we often ask for that. We don't look for debate, but I need clarification.
Attorney Lewis, if you wish, could respond.
Well, thank you, Mr. Baker and Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, and again, this may be two attorneys just seeing things differently, but I've had experience in some of these cases. All students between the ages of seven and 17 are subject to compulsory attendance. And Mr. Frieders has said that if they're not in the public school, they're not, that's not true. What the state law says is, all students must attend a public school unless they meet one of the exceptions, and a private school is an exception. So I just, and this gets to the problems with some of the ordinance wording. All of the students in Illinois between seven and 17 are subject to compulsory attendance. It's just whether they have to attend a public school or not. So I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, Nayla.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment too. I too had several questions on this subject matter, and I guess one of the first ones would be, under the state law, what does the state law delegate to who that responsibility is for the truancy aspect? Is that the school district itself, or the regional superintendent? Who is responsible, that authority is delegated to, to enforce?
The regional superintendent typically has primary enforcement ability for truancy. Local school districts have some limited ability, and may exercise ability under an intergovernmental agreement with the regional superintendent. They are state statutes, so they could be charged as a violation of state statute and prosecuted accordingly.
And I guess, yes, I would like to hear basically from the school district likewise for several of these questions and issues that have been raised, you know, relative to, you know, how significant is this issue within the city of DeKalb and the school district 428? You know, and how is this really, this ordinance would really change or affect the way the police would interact with the school and with this issue of truancy? I can't envision all police officers being all of a sudden truant officers, beyond what they are currently probably doing out there when they observe people, young people that may not be in the appropriate places at appropriate times, would stop and check, I don't know, but I just can't see all that big of a difference, really. But maybe so. And I guess I'd like to hear also eventually from the police department relative to that, is, you know, how would this really, really change? Yes, it might give them some more teeth on behalf of the school district, trying to keep our neighborhoods free and clear of various issues, and that wouldn't be one of them, basically. So I think there are a lot of questions to be answered, and I think it would be good to hear from the other side and the school district as well as if there's other parents out there. It's interesting to note that all of our people who speak this evening are from the private schools, so obviously that is a significant section of the ordinance that definitely probably needs to be looked at, and as we've heard here, needs to be clarified if we are to go forth on such an issue here. So I would say that if we do pass, can pass it on the first reading as a minimum, and bring it back in a couple of weeks or at some later date, after we've had it up, if we hear from the school district and we had more public input on it.
From a staff perspective, again, this was raised at the request of the school district as an initiative that they had requests that we bring before you. And I think it's clear that it's not going to pass this evening. I think it would be helpful to the council to hear from the school district. So since it's not going to pass this evening and their time concerns are kind of irrelevant because of that, my suggestion would be that perhaps you just table this to a date certain, table it to your next meeting, and we'll try and get someone from the school district to come out and address it.
You mean postpone?
Postpone.
If we were to, would the next meeting allow enough time, or should it be two meetings hence, or something like that?
That would be fine.
Maybe the first meeting in, second meeting in September rather than the first? I'd so move then to postpone.
Table?
Postpone.
To the second meeting in September.
To the second meeting in September, City Council.
And Dean, I apologize, I didn't entertain a motion to receive and file at this point. So are we appropriate to just have a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Note and seconded? All those postponed on the voice vote?
To what date certain?
Second meeting in September.
The motion was the second meeting in September.
Is there going to be a school board meeting between now and then? Does anybody know?
Well, could we modify the motion to say the second meeting is in September or after the next school board meeting?
Well, there's a school board meeting tomorrow night.
There's one tomorrow night?
There's a very couple of weeks.
Well, they wouldn't have this on their agenda or be able to take any action on it.
But they might have citizen comment time. I don't, unless we hear from the people in the audience that there wasn't time to even approach the school board, I'd say the date that we're talking about should be just fine, I bet.
You could continue around thereafter, so if that was.
I'm sure somebody from the audience will be here to ask us to continue it if they didn't get a chance to talk to the school board.
Okay. So we're voting to postpone to the second meeting in September? And do I need a?
A voice vote is fine.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same side? Careful.
Now, if there is some sort of agreement to come back at the first meeting, the staff can go ahead and put it on at that time, couldn't they?
Certain.
So the people in the audience, no, you can always bring it up as new business. This, what we're talking about right now is definitely the second. Well, it could come back earlier, I'm alerting you. If it seems like the school board, you know, has dealt with it and the district wants to show up earlier, they could.
I think, I'm hearing council sensitive to the point that I doubt that once this comes back that it's going to be waiving a second reading. I think it's going to go through a second reading as well, would be my speculation.
Well, certainly if it came back earlier than what we just stated, then it would be appropriate to make sure that it goes to at least second reading at the date, second meeting in September, so that nobody's caught off guard.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance 1353, approving a rezoning amendment to the planned development commercial PDC district for a quick service restaurant with a drive-through facility and approve a final commercial development plan illustrating the drive-through location or on property located at 2476 Sycamore Road. Derek has background. Derek?
Thank you, Mayor. About 12 days ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a lengthy discussion regarding this proposal to amend the PUD, the planning unit development, for that particular development, based upon a request by Chicago Bread Company. Panera Bread is the entity at question, and they came to the city, oh, probably half a year ago, where the city engineer and myself met with Panera representation out on site to talk about putting a drive-through in on the property there. And through a lengthy discussion and a couple of ideas thrown around, what you have before you this evening, I think, is a unique application of a drive-through facility on a building that probably, I'm going to guess and suspect, it never intended to have one. that probably, I'm going to guess and suspect it never intended to have one.